Counsel, if you will come to order, it is 7:00 PM. We do have a quorum and we will convene into our regular session. In a moment, I will ask everyone to stand. We'll be led in an invocation by Reverend Edwin, Edlin Cowley from Fellowship United Methodist Church. Edlin was here earlier. There he is, I see him, okay, behind the TV. And after that, remain standing. We'll be then led in our pledges to the American flag and to the Texas flag by Councilmember Tim Kurtz. Would you please stand?
Let us pray. To God, we thank you for the blessing of this day, this day we've never seen before, this day that was not promised to us. We're thankful, God, for this gathering of concerned citizens, of city staff, of leaders. And we pray that your Spirit would lead and guide this meeting tonight so that the good will be done for the city. We ask for your leadership in this special way. In your name that we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
You may be seated. It is time for citizens' presentations. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter, whether or not it's posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that includes the topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. Holly, I don't see that anybody turning a slip.
We have two speakers. Dennis Sheridan. I'll take yours.
Oh, okay. During citizens' presentations?
Yes, sir.
All right. So Dennis, then introduce yourself and state your address.
Dennis Sheridan, One Hill Crest Court Trophy Club. Counsel, thank you very much for speaking, allowing me to speak. I want to thank the council for memorial honoring our veterans. It's not quite done yet. There are blank bricks and there's blank slates and pieces of stone there. I request that a future agenda item consider this, the brick and the slate at the memorial. And I think it's appropriate to, for the council, to set up general guidelines of veteran-appropriate content and for engraving the remaining bricks and the remaining pieces of slate. Then task the town manager to, or his designee, to manage the process and to charge a reasonable fee, that's revenue neutral, to allow citizens to buy an engravement of a brick or a slate. My wife wishes to buy another brick and I wish to purchase one of the slates. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. And Holly, the next person is...
Chuck Lanzy, Orlando.
Ms. Megan? Oh, no, okay. Two people. Chuck Lanza?
Chuck Lanza.
Thank you, Chuck.
119 Inverness Drive. Hi, Tim. Hi, Alicia. First time presenting in front of the council, I guess this is more of a request. There's, there's two items that me and my wife and some neighbors would greatly appreciate the council addressing at some time in the future. One is, and I see it's actually an agenda item tonight regarding the Holiday Inn Hotel and some ordinances or some requests for changes because of the Holiday Inn screening, et cetera. And to that point, I guess, you know, I would like to see, we would like to see, you know, perhaps what the process is. I don't know if this is the correct forum. It might be the Building Standards Commission, perhaps, on future developments and, you know, maybe taking the necessary steps so something like that won't happen in the future. I assume you're all aware of what I'm speaking about with the vending system and it's kind of an eyesore. And now it's having to go back and be retro, you know, rectified after the fact. I don't know if there's some sort of process that could be put in place, if it was just an oversight or what the circumstances were. But it'd be nice with all the future development that we have coming into the town that, you know, there could be a little bit more due diligence or, you know, some other kind of process that, you know, maybe would rectify that so it wouldn't happen going forward. And to that point, just another request potentially to come under consideration is the safety side of things. The other topic I'd like to bring up that I'm hoping it can be addressed. There were some robberies on my street last week on Inverness Drive. And we had an opportunity to speak to a police officer about just kind of the general state of what's going on in the town. And Wood Spring Hotel was brought up. And apparently, there's some serious criminal activity happening over there. And drugs, prostitution, guns, et cetera. I'm sure you're all aware of it. And apparently, there was an attempt to get some video surveillance so they could help the officers in their efforts to come to some conclusions on that criminal activity. And apparently, there's no video cameras there. So I don't know, I guess it's a request on my part and many other concerned citizens that the new developments that are coming into town, perhaps that there's a requirement from a permitting standpoint to have video surveillance in their parking lot so that it can help our law enforcement officers, you know, provide the highest level of safety that we can for our citizens. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Chuck.
Should you mention we're gonna have an item coming up, like the first thing he's talking about?
Mayor, I don't, I don't know if he wants to add it to the public hearing on the Holiday Inn. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, right.
So we are gonna have a public hearing on the Holiday Inn signage and screening. So if you want to comment during that time, you can.
Yeah, we can't comment now, so...
So we can't really comment now.
I believe he might also want his statements in the public hearing record also.
So if you want your statements in the public hearing, you could request that. If you want to come back to the microphone, we'll include them. Do you?
Sure.
And then you need to come back to the microphone and state that for me. Right now.
I would like my comments to be part of the public hearing record. Is that sufficient? Okay.
All right. And then Megan. She didn't give me her last name, so I apologize.
I'm sorry. I was doing it on the fly. I'm Megan. I live on Panorama Circle.
Last name, Megan?
Keoheen.
All right. Spell that for me.
K-E-O-H-E-N.
All right.
We pulled a permit for a drive gate. It would be an improvement to our home, a significant improvement, which I think would increase property value. I have a real estate license, so I feel really confident in that. What I came to find out was that we have a pool in our backyard. And by having the pool, we have to have a self-latching gate. Our thought was to remove the existing iron fence with the self-latching gate and put in a drive gate, again, increasing the value of our home. What I found out was that the drive gate, the automatic drive gate, which would have a solar panel and a battery backup, does not meet the town requirement. The ordinance requires a latching mechanism. So I guess I'm asking that the ordinance be reviewed because City of Southlake, for example, I'll read you what their requirement is. And as you're probably seeing, more and more homeowners are adding the drive gate as an, as a feature of their home. It, it does improve the aesthetic and, and actually would make our backyard, it would double the size of our backyard because we have a corner lot in the way that it's situated. So I'm gonna read for you the Southlake requirement for automatic vehicle entry gate as a pool barrier component. Where an automatic vehicle entry gate is incorporated as a component of a pool barrier, the gate shall open and close within two minutes of opening with a single activation of the switch in order to prevent a gap in the barrier once a vehicle has passed through the entry. So this would be a simple fix. It would just basically kind of bring you guys into what, 2017 pool, you know, pool requirements and also keeping in mind the safety. I have two little kids and so I very much want to keep our backyard and our pool safe. But there just isn't, there isn't a mechanism that exists to allow a latching feature on an automatic drive gate.
All right. And have you talked to code enforcement about this?
I've talked to permitting about the requirement.
Okay.
So it's a requirement, if you have a pool in the backyard, to have the self-latching feature.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So if you would, did you fill out at one of the sheets, you've got her information?
I've got her first name, yes.
If you add your last name and your address, make sure it's on there for us, please.
Okay, great. What is the process to getting ordinance changed?
It has to get back on the agenda. So at this point, we can't debate that topic.
I was just curious, the process.
You've done the correct thing and bring it to our attention and we'll go from there. All right. Do we have anybody else that wanted to address counsel tonight during citizens' presentations? All right. Hearing none, we'll go to announcements and reports. Item number one, receive town manager Class's update regarding the following. Discussion and provide input regarding the same. Introduction of newly hired staff and pool memberships. Mr. Class.
Mayor and council, I wanted to introduce to some of our new staff members formally. If they would just stand up in the back as I introduce them. James Edwards is our new human resource manager. He comes to us from North Richland Hills where he worked in the Human Resources Department for the last 12 years. Thanks, James. Kristen McIntyre, she comes to us from right next door, Trophy Club Mud, where she worked as administrative assistant for the last three and a half years. And then we have Paul Brandon, our new Parks Superintendent, Paul. Paul's come to us after a 13-year career with the City of Arlington in their Parks Department. Nathan Blaze, Nate. Nate comes to us from the Atlanta, Georgia area where he spent the last 12 years as a high school teacher and coach. Joseph Susterich, our newest police officer in the back. Joseph comes to us, he's a 12-year veteran of the United States Navy and current active reserve member. And came to us just shortly after putting himself through the police academy. We're very happy to have him with us. And then Julie Smiestad, Julie. You recall Julie was a part-time with us for a number of years in our IT department. She's now a full-time administrative assistant. She comes to us after a 39-year career with the Social Security Administration. And then lastly, this gentleman in the back that you probably won't recognize in a suit, Tommy, if you'd stand up. Tommy Uzi, who is our new Director of Community Development. And as you well know, Tommy's been with us about five years as an inspector. But he also brings a wealth of experience, 34 years with the City of Burleson and also with Arlington. So I'm very proud of this group that we have here and I just wanted to welcome them to the town again and introduce them to, to council.
Welcome, everybody. Thank you for joining our town. All right. So pool memberships.
Yeah, I just wanted to give you an update on this year's pool memberships. They're tracking very closely with the memberships from last year. We have 711 family memberships this year. 156 of the individual memberships. Our revenues are on track as they were last year. And we've actually had over 10,000 entries into the pool this summer. And we still have about three weeks left. Everybody's been well taken care of, safe, and we've had a good season so far. So thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions on those two items? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on. The consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Counsel, I've been requested that we remove item number four, which is the financial invarience report. And I'll comment on it when we get back to it in just a moment. Anybody else have an item they wish to remove? All right. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda two, three, five, six, and seven.
Motion to approve.
On you, Tim.
I'll second.
Okay. So, so who's making the motion?
Motion to approve items two, three, five, six, seven.
All right. Have a motion by Councilmember Jensen and a second by Councilmember Kurtz. All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. Counsel, item four, I was contacted today by our finance director that noticed that there was a Keen error in one of the reports. And so she requested that we pull the item. She didn't have time to go back and check everything to make sure something else wasn't wrong. So she requested to pull it and put it on the next report. So that's the reason we're taking it off. All right. It is 7:15. And we will enter into a public hearing for item number eight. Conduct a public hearing regarding the Trophy Club Crime Control and Prevention District, CCPD budget for fiscal year 2017-2018 submitted to the town council by the CCPD board. Anyone wishing to speak on this item at this time? Seeing no one seeking the floor and no one signing up, we will then close the public hearing at 7:16 and move on into our regular session. Item number nine, consider to take appropriate action regarding a proclamation of the town council recognizing September 2017 as Blood Cancer Awareness Month in Trophy Club and providing an effective date. We have proclamation 2017-07. Alexis, Mayor, are you here, Alexis?
No, she contacted us yesterday to let us know she would not be able to make it tonight.
Okay.
So no one's here tonight.
So at one time Alexis from the Leukemia and Lipoma Society was gonna be here to accept the proclamation. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the proclamation 2017-07.
I'll make a motion to approve proclamation 2017-07.
All right. We have a motion to approve by Mayor Pro-Tam Rowe and a second by Councilmember Fleury. Any discussion? We will forego the reading of it, seeing as though there's no one here to accept it. And I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving it, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is approved. Item number 10, consider to take appropriate action regarding the award of the Depository Bank Services, RFA, and authorizing the mayor, his designee, to execute all necessary documents. I believe, was Emily gonna say something with S or U? Amber, you gonna say something? So Emily Upshaw?
Emily Upshaw.
Thank you. Emily, introduce yourself, please, for us.
I'm Emily Upshaw. I'm with Valley View Consulting. We were hired to help the town go through the bank RFA process. Has to be done once at least every five years. So I'm gonna take you through a summary of the process that we conducted and the ultimate results and we'll provide a recommendation at the end. Okay. So all of this, I'm not gonna go into extreme detail, but I wanted to walk you through the process. It is quite lengthy, so we worked very closely with staff to get this process done. The first step in the process is to actually identify the eligible banks in your area. So once we provided that list, we opened up an advertisement and that was published. It's required by law, so we made sure that that was done. We also created the RFA document itself. We looked at all of the banking services that the town requires. We made sure that those were addressed in the actual RFA. Then staff distributed all of the RFA documents to the eligible banks. Once we had all of those distributions out, we hosted a pre-application conference. It was attended by one representative of Wells Fargo Bank. Then we analyzed all of the responses we received. You actually received two responses, one from Frost Bank and one from Wells Fargo Bank. First financial is your incumbent bank and they actually did not submit a response this time around. So we are here to recommend a bank change just because of the circumstances. We did look at, we have listed all of the, the criteria here for you to look over. But really, we're not assigning points. We're not doing weighting. This is really a service that requires analysis and consideration of services. It is an important part of the town. So we have a whole lot of best value criteria that we went through. And ultimately, it came down to the services provided and the customer service available. So we'll go through that in a little bit. Here's the economic portion. This is detailed in the agenda packet that you have, but these are kind of the ultimate results that we wanted to point out to you. Frost Bank did come in with estimated service fees over a five-year period of about $25,000. Wells Fargo came in at about $21,000. So this is a five-year period. It sounds like a pretty good amount of money, but it's spread over five years. Then we have the earnings credit rate. This is the rate that the bank is willing to offer you on your account balances to offset those bank fees. So the third line down, we have the target compensating balance to offset bank fees. That's actually the amount of your bank account that needs to remain on average to offset all of the fees that they've proposed. So Frost, you have to keep about 40, $472,000. Frost, you have to keep about $596,000. So based on the operating, you're keeping an average of about $550,000 anyway. So most of your bank fees are going to be offset by those balances. The next item on there is the estimated safekeeping fees. This is a different service. It's not offset by bank fees or offset by earnings credit rate. So we've included that as a separate item. Wells Fargo actually proposed no charge. So that was a benefit to the town. And finally, we've listed the investment options. The rates that we receive for those investment options are well under market. So we wouldn't recommend using the investment options, but we do have that as a requirement in our RFA itself. Finally, the additional considerations that we have listed on there, they're really just to emphasize that both of these banks are providing a very competitive response to your service request. And they're essentially the same across the board. So what it came down to was looking at the specifics. Bank location was a big deal. Wells Fargo is actually a little bit closer than Frost. So that'll be easier on staff when they have daily bank runs. There's also a customization of services that we addressed at the pre-application conference. The Wells Fargo representative was very helpful. He went through some improvements that could be made to help efficiencies and improve processes. And then finally, customer interaction. You're going to be involved with these bankers day-to-day, so you want to make sure that you have a good relationship with them. So in order to address that, we actually invited the banks to come in and perform a demonstration for staff. So the ultimate considerations, the technology features, the process improvement and customization that we talked to the Wells Fargo rep was very important to the town. And also with the demos, we were able to look at the interface and the system capabilities of both banks. And ultimately, staff was more comfortable with the Wells Fargo. So we're actually here to recommend that the mayor or his designee actually have the ability to go ahead and negotiate and execute the contracts with Wells Fargo for bank services for the town.
All right. Thank you. Amber, any comments?
Everything she said is staff support, so...
All right. At this time, I would entertain a motion to award the contract to Wells Fargo and authorize the mayor and his staff to negotiate the terms with Wells Fargo.
I'll move to award the Depository Bank Services to Wells Fargo and authorize the mayor or his designee to execute all necessary documents.
Have a second?
Second.
All right. So I have a motion by Rowe and a second by Jensen. Any other discussion? Greg?
Just a question. I realized you said they didn't submit an application because they are our local bank.
Yes.
Did we reach out to them, make sure they received? I know it's an RFP, but did we reach out to them, make sure that they received it? Fair enough.
All right. Any other questions? All right. All those in favor of the motion, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I think you're gonna do number elevens, but give me a second to read it. Item number 11, receive a presentation from Valley View Consulting regarding investment analysis services for fiscal year 2017-2018. The budget general fund from the staff. Okay. So Emily, go ahead.
All right. So I'm gonna start this off by saying we appreciate the relationship with the banking RFA services. And with that fee, there is a clause in our contract that says we can provide investment advisory services to you within a year and you can offset those fees with the fees that you're already paying us for the bank services. So we're here to represent Valley View and the investment advisory services that we can provide. Essentially, what it comes down to, that fee that you're paying for bank consulting, it can offset about six months' worth of our services. So we just wanted to present to you what we can help the town with and see if you had any questions or any comments about what we can do going forward. Okay. So just a little bit of background, we're an investment advisory firm, so we do have a fiduciary duty to our clients. We do take this very seriously. We need to make sure that every investment that we're making is on par with the investment policy that you have in place. And we need to make sure that we're following your cash flow needs. So this is a very lengthy process. Our company was founded in 1998 and was registered with SEC in 1999. So we've been doing this for a long time. We have our specialties listed. Banking services consulting is what we've already provided for you. But we're able to provide a lot more services, cash management, investment strategy, and reporting in general for PFIA compliance. So we have some experience items on there. The 200-plus years of combined experience, that's just to say the team that you're working with has been involved with governments for a long time. The individuals that I work with, I am admittedly the youngest, and they've been working in the public funds industry since 1981. They've seen the ups and the downs. So I'm here representing them. They're the big brains behind the operation, but we think that we can provide a pretty good service for your town. I do have a few clients on there. Just to give you an example, Highland Village and Keller are really in your immediate area. But City of Azul was one example. It might be a good reference to reach out to. They're in a similar situation. They're building a new city hall. So we've been helping them with their investments for that process. This is kind of the nitty-gritty detail about the practice that we have. We have quite a few public funds clients. They range in portfolio sizes, so 10 million to 400 million. Currently, your town is about 10 million to 20 million, just depending on the year. We do have a team approach. We have a phone call every Friday. We update everyone on every single client that we have. We only have 45 clients for that reason. We're very selective about who we work with. But the reason that I joined the firm was the unbiased investment decisions and strategies. We do not manage pools. We're strictly focused on our clients. It's the only thing that we do. We don't have to, to keep track of pools and make investments on behalf of other individuals. So ultimately, we're recommending safe and conservative portfolio enhancements. And I think that that's something that we can provide for you. Our general approach, we start with your investment policy. Your investment policy is coming up for approval in about, in October of 2017. So this would actually be pretty good timing for us to, to step in and help. There were some changes to the law, so it's gonna be updated. And we're ready to step in and help with that process. What we're gonna do is we would take a look at all of your balances going forward and in the past. What we're looking for is to identify trends, where you're actually going to need cash. We match maturities with those cash needs. So that's our very conservative approach. That's how we invest. And because we were involved with your banking services, RFA, we're positioned pretty well to help you with your cash management and determine what would be the best balance to keep in that bank account and earn the best interest. We have included an example portfolio just to, to show how a lot of our clients look in their portfolio. We're using a lot of bank CDs right now, which is kind of strange. There's not a lot of securities or really anything else that can rival those rates right now. But I did want to point out, we do have bank money market accounts. And that's something that I think that your town could utilize. We're seeing a bank money market account that's earning 1.46% right now, completely liquid and fully collateralized. So we're also looking for opportunities like that and it's a good way to manage your liquid portfolio. So with the strategy execution, we are non-discretionary investment advisors. We never take possession of your money. That's for the protection of the town. You should be the one controlling your funds. So we really rely on open communication. We're trying to, to work with you and talk with you through the process so that you understand what we're doing because ultimately, it's your responsibility to understand. So we really try to focus on having open communication with everybody. We execute trades with approval from your investment officers. We provide investment reports. We can work on an accounting system for you. And we like to come present. We like the podium. So we'll be up here to present any time that you ask us to. So finally, just to recap, we work with Texas Public Funds. We have a lot of experienced individuals in this industry. We're looking to do conservative investing. We're very independent and client-focused. We're not, again, we're not interested in just pools. And we're willing to come talk to you about it. We want to be open with our communication, let you know what we're doing for your investment strategy. And we have a whole lot of bios. This is where you'll see the brains behind the operation. Richard Long is the owner of the company. Susan Anderson has been in the business since 1981 and is kind of a powerhouse of knowledge, so... powerhouse of knowledge. So I think Amber and April could benefit a lot from her knowledge. But we really wanted to open this up for any questions or comments that you might have, any concerns. We have this service as an option for you. It'd be about six months that you're fully funded already, so it would be kind of a trial run. So we just wanted to present this to you.
All right. Thank you.
See your thoughts.
We're not agenda to take action, but Amber, did you want to make any comments about this proposal?
Yes, sir. The reason we brought Emily back in to explain the services is because we made an emphasis on training when we were presenting our budget and this as an item within our budget. And we wanted her, for her, to fully explain to you what services they can offer and how they could advise us with our investment strategies and our cash flows. So I just thought her representation would be a better explanation.
All right. Counsel, any questions? So you made some comment, and I probably will get this slightly wrong, but it's like you would provide investment services for a period of time because you did the RFA, and there would be no charge for those services.
Yes. So the fees that you're paying us for the banking consulting services, you could use those to offset the fees for IA services. That's just something that we do across the board. For our investment advisory clients, we provide the bank services anyway. So to be consistent.
Well, I heard it pretty correctly for me.
Yep.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? All right. Emily, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on to item 12, case PD AMD 1702, 7-Eleven signage. Conduct a public hearing regarding a request to amend Exhibit C of ordinance number 2016-02P&Z, Plan Development District Number 13, generally located on the northwest corner of State Highway 114 and Trophy Club Drive. It is 7:31, and we will open the public hearing. If anyone wishing to speak at this time on this item. Yes, come and identify yourself if you'd like to.
Sure.
State your name and your address.
My name is Jacob Capatia. My address is 4250 Action Drive. That's in Mesquite, Texas. Zip code is 75150. I want to thank the counsel this evening and Ms. Lisa, who I know from many of our conversations, for hearing our case tonight. I'm here on behalf of Barnett Signs and 7-Eleven because we're seeking to amend the current PD to increase the size of the monument sign. And also, there's some other housekeeping I think that staff recommends for some of the illuminated signs there. Before I make my case on the monument signs, do you have any, any questions? Or Lisa, do you want to talk anything about what the staff recommends before I move forward?
Sure. I can just talk about how the monument sign, they would like...
Let me kind of pause for a minute. We are entering the public hearing.
Okay.
This is a time for public comment.
Sure.
And so if you don't mind, what I'm going to do is when I go to item B, which will be when we consider the action on the item.
Okay.
I'll give you a chance to come back up, and we'll start that dialogue because we can't really ask the questions during the public hearing.
Fantastic.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
So anybody else want to address the counsel during the public hearing? All right. Hearing, no one. Then at 7:33, we will close the public hearing, and we will enter back into our regular session. Item B, consider to take appropriate action regarding a request to amend Exhibit C of ordinance number 2016-02P&Z, Plan Development District Number 13, generally located on the northwest corner of State Highway 114, Trophy Club Drive. All right. So Jacob, you're back up if you want to.
All right, I'm back.
And we'll go to staff and get them involved, but it's fine that you went ahead and made comments.
Okay. So the current monument sign we have there is, it's kind of short. We are very, what we want to do is increase the visibility of that convenience store, the 7-Eleven location. And due to some of the natural and artificial features there, for instance, there's a few brick walls there or masonry walls there that are interfering with the visibility. There's also a tree line. And in regards to our neighbors, the Meet You BBQ place and also the multi-tenant facility that's right there, our sign is significantly smaller, not only in height, and we want to kind of compete with the visibility for that corner and make sure that everybody knows that the 7-Eleven convenience store is there. Not for the Trophy Club people, because I'm sure everybody knows it's there already, but more so for the people heading, heading west on 114, and they can stop and get Slurpee or pizza, whatever they choose to get at that place. Also, part of that, we are, we're making the case to install the LED price signs for that monument sign. It's more of a different, excuse me, timing when it comes to advertise the gasoline prices. The fonts are kind of dead old, and they, they look horrible in comparison to the LEDs. Not only that, it's, it's not easy to change the prices without sending somebody out there. So we want to install a LED price sign there, increase the overall height, and of course, bring it up to the ordinance standards with masonry and those sorts of things as well.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Lisa, your report.
To add on to what Jacob said, yes, the masonry sign is the most obvious part of it. They would like to increase the height of it. Currently, the masonry sign itself is four feet tall, which is within the, what the PD allows. But it also sits on top of a post, which is on top of a concrete foundation, which is on top of a landscape berm. So it has more of a six-foot overall height. The existing one also has no masonry around it at all. And like you said, there's no LED lighting. They'd like to add the LED lighting as that's just current technology, something that was added a few years ago at Tom Thumb. And they want to do masonry that will match the rest of the store. I know that the, there's some small, some short walls next to the entrance to 7-Eleven that they block the sign a little bit. There's a few pictures within the packet to show you some perspectives. In addition, they're also wanting to update the canopy. The, right now, one of the logos illuminates, the other two don't. They'd like for all three of them to illuminate. That does not mean that any of the stripes will illuminate at all. On the building itself, the convenience store, they just want to update the sign that's over the door. And on the car wash, they would like to add signage because there's none right now, so that it has a 7-Eleven advertisement on it, but then it also has an entrance and exit sign for a way of traffic flow. In addition, there is another suite in the 7-Eleven building. I believe it's an insurance company right now, and I wanted to add something into the ordinance that protects that suite so that they don't have a problem having signage moving forward. The, what was a completely separate issue that I would like to add into this while we have this ordinance open is there's, there's one sentence in the ordinance that says that all signage shall be externally lighted only, which was added back in '95 when this ordinance was created. And because most signs nowadays are internally illuminated, most of it's by LED, sometimes neon, I would like to just change the wording on that to where it's more going towards your channel letters that we prefer. And just also allowing things like, you know, if there's LED or neon inside the channel letter, then that's not a big deal because it's not actually exposed. So planning and zoning, they had a few questions about the proposed height of the signs or the monument sign and the location and visibility. But they recommended approval. The vote is six to one, and staff recommends approval as well.
All right. So it seems like something I read in this was talking about the, the lines that come off of the 7-Eleven, that like, one of them was illuminated, the others were not illuminated. Did I read that right?
The logo on the 7-Eleven canopy is currently illuminated, like on the longest side. None of the lines are illuminated, and they're not proposed to be illuminated.
Okay. All right. All right. Counsel, either questions or someone willing to move ordinance 2017-16P&Z?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2016, 2017-16P&Z, amending Plan Development District Number 13.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. So I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Rowe and a second by Councilmember Fleury. Any other questions or discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. So the monument sign is four, four feet from the ground or?
The sign itself is four feet tall. From the top of the sign to the concrete, it's on the ground where the, where you drive is about six feet.
Six feet. So, so how about this one? This is going to be from the ground, eight feet up?
This one, I believe, is actually going to be the sign itself, including the, the masonry surround will be eight feet.
Okay.
So it is a bit taller.
Right. But only about two foot, I guess, is what you're saying.
Basically, they're, they're asking that they get the extra height because of, one, the, the short walls that are next to the entrance that block part of the sign, and two, the signs at the two next-door properties have larger signs.
Okay. And what about the length? The same?
The length is actually a little shorter. I think the ordinance says we have a 15-foot max, but we're going to only, we're only going for 12 feet.
Now, what, what, how, how long is the one you have now?
The current...
I'm going to say it's 15.
I think it's 15 feet.
I think I put it in the report.
It is in the report. But yeah, we are reducing it to 12, and I think she's correct. It's 15 feet.
So, um...
15.
How many other tenants are going to come before us? Because it seems like everybody keeps coming and saying, hey, they got that one. They got that one. So do we have one more, I guess, that might come? The one, the office suites, is that what's left?
Office Trophy Club. They may.
And the shopping center itself.
Well, they have a big, tall one.
Yeah.
That has everything on it.
But you're right, the executive suites might come.
Okay.
All right, Doug.
I was just going to comment that the shops at Trophy Club sign with all those... That thing's 10 feet tall.
Oh, yeah.
At least, yeah.
I think that's why most of these are coming back to us because...
Right.
I guess. So what's the height restriction currently in the PD?
Four feet.
It's, yeah, for a regular monument sign.
So this was, the shops was approved as an amendment?
The multi-tenant sign?
Uh-huh.
That, for those kinds of signs, I want to say it's 10 feet.
Okay. So multi-tenant's allowed.
Multi-tenant is allowed to be larger or something.
You said 7-Eleven's a multi-tenant.
Yeah.
But they don't, they don't have the other...
They're not going to put the other guy's sign on there.
Right.
Doesn't, that's, I'm sure the PD doesn't say must have the other tenant on the sign. It probably just states multi-tenant. Therefore, this is all pointless, so.
Well, we still have to come for LED.
Yeah, true. Hey, I, I wanted to say that I appreciate you proactively looking at the LED portion. We've had several where what is written isn't necessarily the way things are implemented, and Dennis has dealt with it on P&Z several times. And so I'm all, I love cleanup in, in the stream of doing things, cleaning things up, and, and more reflecting the practical application of how we apply the ordinance. So I appreciate that.
Sorry. One more thing.
Yes, go ahead.
She had mentioned that she wanted to clean up the PD. So is the wording as you want it now?
All right. And so Dennis, did you want to make any comments?
No, sir.
All right. Counsel, any other questions or comments? Hearing, none. I will call for the vote. All those in favor of approving ordinance 2017-16P&Z, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. It is approved. Thank you, sir, for coming forward with this.
Hey, thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Appreciate it.
So are the 7-Eleven people here, or was it just you?
Yeah, he's...
7-Eleven people are here?
Yes, sir.
You want to introduce yourself?
That...
Come on up.
My name is Victor Reese. I am with 7-Eleven, and of course, I'm directing this project in here, and hopefully, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item number 13, case SP AMD 1701 Wonderland Plaza. Discussion and recommendation regarding, or request to amend the approved site plan for Wonderland Plaza, generally located south of Bobcat Boulevard and approximately 460 feet west of Trophy Club Drive. Lisa, you want to report on this?
Yes, sir. Wonderland Plaza, they are proposing to amend their site plan and landscape plan and add a fencing plan, canopy plan, and patio plans. You'll also find irrigation plans and grading plans in the packet that are there really to back up a few things, such as, they, they have a few proposed amendments. Well, more than a few. I have 11 listed. And I can go through them real quickly. They would like to allow artificial turf in the play area rather than sod. They would like to allow three canopies over the playground equipment. They'd like to allow four-foot-tall black decorative metal fencing internal of the six-foot decorative fencing in the playground. They also want to add a miniature golf area within there. They, they would like a basketball court. And with this, because of being basketball, they're proposing a 10-foot-tall chain-link fence that has black vinyl coating on it. Also, to extend a fence along the east property line, a six-foot-tall black decorative fence to allow for enclosed classroom space, outdoor classroom space. Removal of some of the shrubs that turns out are in the play area, adding some palms for landscaping, removing the two fountains that were originally planned for the entrances of the two buildings. The, and then they have an addition of a patio with a pergla and a fence around it on the, on the side of the retail building. And then they also would like to add on standing seam metal awnings onto the retail building. They, basically at P&Z, there's a lot of talk about the, about the fencing and, you know, the height, the type, you know, why it's there. You know, a lot of talk about the, the chain-link fencing, of course, as well as the color and material of the awnings, whether it's fabric or stainless steel, or I'm sorry, seamless, I can't think of the word. So they ended up recommending approval, you know, subject to the retail building having bronze awnings and also not allowing the chain-link fencing. The applicant has, they've been very agreeable. Some of these things were already installed before this application came in, and so they've been allowed to leave things as they are and not add the new things yet, with an understanding that they may have to remove some of those things if they're not allowed. So my staff recommends approval of this. I'm available for questions, and the applicant is available.
So it looked like there was some guidance you were looking for, some of the items maybe, the way it was worded. Does P&Z have any comments?
At this time, sure. She's giving them.
So was there something that we were supposed to give guidance on retaining to the awnings and...
No, no. They, P&Z went back and forth between metal awnings and fabric. Basically, fabric is required by the PD, but the applicant would like to do the metal, and P&Z agreed that the metal would look better. And so they decided to go with bronze on that, and they simply mostly agreed that they didn't want the chain-link.
And so the, what I read about the chain-link was because it was the basketball area?
Yes. It's only around the basketball area. The rest of the area is all the decorative metal that looks like bronze.
So it was like the applicant said, the chain-link fence would actually provide kind of a softer...
Right. So when children fall into it...
Something to run against as opposed to the...
Look at our tennis, tennis courts.
Yeah.
As well as being taller so that you're not losing balls over the fence all the time.
So your recommendation is let them keep the awnings they have as opposed to fabric?
Yes.
And to do a chain-link, powder-coated, powder-coated?
Black chain-link.
Yes.
Of that area.
I've seen it, that that's something that was actually already out in the field. And luckily, being vinyl black, it, it does blend in a lot better than you would think. Obviously, it is taller, but...
And then they were going to move the palms?
Yeah. They're going to add six windmill palms. Those will be where one of the fountains was. So...
All right. So would entertain a motion to approve the request to amend the site plan for Wonderland Plaza as specified in the packet. Are questions?
I have a question.
Yes. All right. Councilmember Jensen?
So in the P&Z commission recommendation, it states not allowing chain-link fence, but it doesn't state... So in the P and Z commission recommendation, it states not allowing chain-link fence, but it doesn't state what the motion allowed. So what did they allow in the motion?
Everything else that's listed, the eleven items, except for.
So they made no decision, that was the hang-up? It appears that there was many motions, so that was the hang-up, was the chain-link?
The chain-link was the main one.
If, if chain-link is, excuse me, Dennis Sheridan, uh, P and Z commissioner, uh, chairman, if P, if chain-link is denied, then they are allowed to use wrought iron. That's, that's an approved type fence.
Right, at four and a half feet, as shown on exhibit.
So they'd have to go back and, and request a, um, I see, I see your point, all right. It, it could be replaced with wrought iron. If, if, and if that's not clear, then I would request the council make that part of their motion, if that's their wishes. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Lisa, comments there?
Um, I would say that whatever council decides, that y'all make it clear if y'all would like wrought iron there, or if you would like chain-link there.
All right, was there another, uh, issue, Jensen?
What, uh, what type of fences around the new courts at the schools? So all the, the new football fields have new fences now. Do you know what type of fencing they did?
Looks like black.
Dennis maybe? Does Dennis know?
Don't, it's black chain-link. Usually, it's chain-link.
The, uh, schools have chain-link. In the, uh, for an example, the high school, which is across the street in that area, has the vinyl-coated chain-link, okay? Um, the, um, tennis courts at the country club, I believe, are chain-link. I, they're so far back, I don't pay attention to them.
Right.
Okay, so there is chain-link, uh, vinyl-coated in the area. As asked at the P and Z, um, which I voted against it because of the chain-link, it was the fact that the school, I, I said I didn't like it at the school, and the parks department never asked me.
There's also at the animal hospital, correct?
Animal hospital was very specific by council, um, uh, specification.
Now, and that's not vinyl-coated, though, is it?
Yes, it is.
It is, yes, it is.
It is, okay.
So, all right, so I have, uh, council member Kurtz who raised his hand, and then I'll go to Schaffner.
So I tend to remember that we asked when they were building this to put either stop signs or crosswalk or something out in front, which obviously they didn't do.
I've been told that that's something that we cannot require because.
It's not required, but we don't, we're not required to accept any of these either.
Correct.
Right, so, I mean, now, you wanna, they also wanna take out the fountains, and what's the, what's the reason for the fountains?
Um, I've just been told that.
They just don't like them anymore?
They just didn't wanna do them. I don't have a, I don't know what the reason is.
Anybody here with the applicant that wishes to comment on that?
Yes, I don't think that way.
Yeah, I think there is. Please state your name and your address, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Steve Homer. I'm with Homer Engineering, two oh six Elm Street, uh, Suite one oh five in Louisville, Texas. Um, I'm not really sure, I wasn't actually involved in the discussions with regard to the removal of the, uh, the fountains. It was something to do with accessibility, was my understanding, based on the discussion that he had during the, uh, uh, P and Z meeting. But with regard to the, the actual decision as to why they were removed, I can't speak to that.
All right, thank you.
But I guess what I'm trying to say, some things were put in that shouldn't have been put in, and we're leaving them there, right, already?
Oh, yes.
And some things that we asked for are not put in, and we're just supposed to, again, just say, okay, everything's great, just accept everything.
All right.
I, I think.
I wanna make sure I understand.
Hello?
If you go to exhibit, um, or you can go to any of them, exhibit E, exhibit, uh, G, if you look on, I think the whole reason that we added, or we requested that there be a flashers is because there's a crosswalk on the plans. So who, who put the crosswalk on the plans? Was it us? Was it them? Who, who put the crosswalk? That's the whole reason that we added the flashers, is because there is actual crosswalk on this plan.
Is there a crosswalk there in reality?
I don't believe there's one there now.
Whoever drew the plans put the crosswalk there, but.
Uh, all I'm saying is it's on the plan.
Is it on our street or on their property?
Street.
On the street.
So this is the reason that we added the crosswalk, is because, or the flashers, is because they showed a crosswalk on there. So we assumed that they were gonna put that crosswalk in, so that's why we required the flashers.
They, I believe they asked for the crosswalk.
And then they agreed to it.
Yeah, I believe they asked for the crosswalk, saying that a lot of kids would be walking to and from.
Yeah, so I agree with Tim. I mean, it's on the plan, we, we requested it, we added it to the motion, in fact. I think it's part of the motion.
The problem comes in if it's not on their property.
Okay, so, but I, you see what Tim's saying, is they're asking for a give.
They're asking, I understand they're asking for something.
Yeah, I'm just saying, everyone seems to pick and choose what they feel like doing, and our town doesn't catch it until it's done. Should be down there every week, making sure that things aren't built, that aren't supposed to be built, and if they are, they should take them out. I just don't understand it. I build all over the place, and guess what? That's exactly what happens in other towns.
You do have.
The signage guy who came in from Mesquite, if he had done something in Mesquite that he wasn't supposed to do, the inspector would've come down and said, pull that out. That's what he should've done, and I, I just don't understand, I, I know it's not the time to talk about it, but I don't, I don't understand why we keep getting into this, and we're gonna talk about it with the next people. It's ridiculous that we allow it to go on.
I'll say this, you don't have to approve the things that are already in.
I realize that, believe me, yeah, I get it.
I make sure that's clear. They have to pull that out if that's not approved tonight. All right, council member Rowe?
Yeah, um, but I, I have some thoughts on what Tim was talking about, but first, before we go down that rabbit hole, I do wanna note that, um, given the application, I support the chain-link proposal, because there's physically no other way to play basketball. There's just none. I mean, a basketball with a four-foot, playing basketball next to a four-foot wrought iron fence is broken rib waiting to happen. Um, so, and we, we, we have it around our sport courts, so do the schools. Sports are a different thing. Um, that being said, um, looking over, looking over, uh, the proposed changes, most of them come from a position of reason, to me, from the vantage point of a private property owner. The issue I have is that they were all done, shoot first, ask questions later. I'm up here for free, talking to you guys about these things, when you come through and propose them, and we pick them apart, and we talk about them, sometimes we talk them to death, and then we vote for them, and then you don't follow it. So, so, so what, what, what do you expect me to do? I want, I want nothing more. I, I am the, probably, one of the most pro-private property rights people that will ever get elected in this town. I want nothing more than to be able to give the liberty to the people that own the land, to use the land and enjoy the land as they see fit. But if you don't follow the rules, then where does that leave me? And where does that leave people who look to us to, to, to represent them and enforce ordinances? So, um, I gotta tell ya, I mean, most of these plans make a lot of sense to me, uh, but it's, it's very frustrating that, that we were dealing with this in an ex post facto manner. We got, like Tim said, we got two of them tonight, so.
I have two more council members who wanna comment. I'm gonna come to you, but I would like for somebody to look up that motion, when we dealt with that before, and see if we included in the motion this.
Oh, I know we did, but I'll look it up.
That's what I was about to speak of. It's actually on the site plan, note seven.
All right.
States flashing beacons for the crosswalk shall be installed per city standards and specifications designed by others. It's on the site plan, they must be there.
Okay. So, um, therefore, P and Z didn't comment on that, I guess, or pay any attention to that area?
Dennis Sheridan, uh, it was not on the agenda, and we were specifically not gonna discuss it because of that reason. I can state that I was on the P and Z when it first came in, and also at the town council, when the council approved. And the crosswalk and the access from the high school to this, the whole facility, to both the Montessori and the retail, was heavily discussed, and negotiated, and agreed to, but I don't know exactly what the, um, motion said.
All right, great, so we've got the motion, uh, clarified on us. So I will assume that, uh, to get their CO, they're gonna have to get the crosswalk painted and get the flashers in. Everything's gotta be complete. So Greg had his hand up, and then I'll come to you, sir.
I support the chain-link too, but just a question, without trying to figure out the site plan, we, we have an ordinance, I believe, with parallel fencing. Is it more than twenty feet or whatever?
There's not any parallel fencing. They're, at the moment, um, because they could, they put up two, another fence next to another one, um, but they're gonna remove the one that's not allowed. Basically, the wrought iron one is next to the, the chain-link one.
Yeah, and so it doesn't violate our ordinance, we have to make an exception or?
No, 'cause there's not gonna be anything like that, and they actually have already, um, changed out all the chain-link fence that was on the border of the park and this property. They changed it all out to the, the six-foot wrought iron already.
All right, sir, do you wanna comment? Come up to the microphone, please.
Yes, so this is, uh, Steve Homer again. I was in the, uh, the council meeting when the crosswalk was approved. Uh, and at that time, we objected to the, the installation of the signs and the, the flashing beaker, uh, beacons, rather. But it was basically, we either agreed to put them in, or we have our request denied. So ultimately, we did agree to the installation of that, um, but I think there's been some, during the time, I think it was trying to be put in before the school started during that, that year. Um, and for whatever reason, I'm not sure why it wasn't installed, but I just wanted to reiterate the fact that during the council meeting, when we were here originally, we did object to, to the signs. We did add the note, as you've indicated, but it was a result of the discussions in the meeting to, to have that in there. So it was either have it or not have our project. So that was the, the reason why, um.
I guess that's.
So that's the excuse for not doing it?
So you know it's supposed to be there, but it's not there, okay?
But what I'm saying, though.
Ten, ten as the floor, and then I'll.
That was just a comment.
But what I'm saying, though, is at the same time, I mean, we did object to it, uh, but we did ultimately agree to it, just to, to be able to move forward with our project. If we have to put those in, I guess we will have to put them in, um, but still, at this point, we still object to the installation of the, the, the crosswalks. We felt at that time, and we still feel, that it should be the high school's responsibility to install the, uh, the flashers due to the, the school being the predominant user of that crosswalk facility. But in defense of my client, unfortunately, he's not able to be here, he's out of town at the present time. He, he was unaware of the fact, uh, putting in some of the, the features that were installed. Once he found out he couldn't, he did stop, and we've gone through the process, working with town staff, as well as P and Z, and ultimately, tonight with council, to, uh, to work with something to try to get this, get it approved, so that he can continue forward.
All right, Tim?
I guess I'm dumbfounded. Is this, this his first? No, Flower Mound. This is not his first, and obviously, it's, it's, you're in this business. Well, I'm in the business of building things. I know when I put my plans in, that's all that I can build. I can't go out into my parking lot and put a, put a, a basketball court in the parking lot, nor can I put a pool in my fitness center without going to the town. I'm dumbfounded that you would think that, we would think, you wouldn't know any better. I'm really shocked that, that, that the owner thinks that we don't know any better. We understand that you specifically changed things and tried to get away with it, and got caught, and that's why you're here. You just told me you, you didn't like what we told you you had to do, so what you did was you built and didn't do what we asked you to do. And now you're coming back and saying, gee, okay, well, sorry, can we get it now? I, I'm ju, I'm just amazed. If I ran my business that way, I mean, I'm, I, I just can't imagine doing it.
Sorry. All right, council member Rowe?
Yeah, I was just gonna make a, make a comment that answers one of Tim's questions. When, when we, when we initially approved the site plan, the owner, cited multiple times his, um, facility in Flower Mound that was already operating. So, uh, unless Flower Mound's entire community development department is completely asleep, which I doubt they are, then ignorance is not a claim, and, uh, again, I'm so frustrated, because there's nothing here that you shouldn't be allowed to do. I hate the fact that you have to even ask us for permission to change the kind of plants you're putting somewhere. That's a little bit ridiculous, but the rules are the rules. And I can't, I can't deal with, um, I, 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 I'm very conflicted.
All right, and Jensen, I think you had your hand up on that floor. No?
I was gonna make a motion, so I'll defer to.
All right, council member.
Yeah, I agree with Tim and with what Ryland just said. It's not ignorance, they did know, so it's not ignorance. And the fact that you said you think it's the high school responsibility, since they're gonna be the ones utilizing it, well, they're utilizing to enter your property. So I don't think that's valid at all, and I agree absolutely with what Tim was saying earlier.
All right, council member Jensen?
It's negotiation, I get it, uh, but it is in the plan, so you have to do it. Of course, nothing here is gonna change that. I mean, it's still in the plan, and staff knows now. Y'all can't give a CO until it's done, correct, staff?
It was based on what was already allowed in the, um.
Right, and we're not removing the requirement. It's still on the site plan to have the flashers.
Well, that's not something that we can require.
It's on the site plan.
Legally.
We'll, we'll look at the plans, just a second.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I make a motion.
Do you have a comment to make?
I think we have.
Oh, okay, I thought maybe you were.
Tommy.
All right, so, um, questions or comments or motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, as presented, allowing the, uh, vinyl-coated chain-link fence around the basketball court as, um, is that clear enough, Mr. Dodd? How do I state the fencing issue?
That's what you think that's clear.
You might, you might include a height.
Up to ten feet.
Up to ten feet high.
And then what about the other?
Uh, motion to approve as presented.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion by Jensen and a second by Rowe. Any other discussion?
I guess, can we just make sure this comes back to us, or we, we're aware of, that they just go ahead and, we get a CO approved without the crosswalk? Is there a way to make, make sure we have a?
Well, I don't think so. You approve this, they're gonna move forward.
Without the crosswalk and the flashers?
I think the issue is that. The CO won't come back to council, is what I'm saying. CO won't come back to us. The crosswalk itself is not on their property, it's, it's on us.
So have we made it clear that we want that? I guess that's what we're saying.
I think the motion was work with the town to do that, right? Something like that?
The motion did not state anything in regards to the crosswalk.
Crosswalk, just the flashers.
In my opinion, it's already in the site plan. There's no, I'm not making any modification to the plan, therefore, I didn't include anything in the motion.
So the crosswalk itself would probably be a town responsibility to paint it, would be my guess. Town property, but I don't know.
Do they have a CO?
Yes.
So they already have a CO?
They have a CO, huh?
Yes.
How do we get a CO when we?
Because everything else that's on the approved building plans and the, the last approved site plan, it's all there. This is just adding, it's adding turf, which can be changed one way or the other. It's adding some fencing, which can be changed one way or the other. So the fact that the building itself is ready, it's, it's good safety-wise, the state of Texas has come in since it's.
Sure are people in it?
I think that they start.
Own that place is open.
Tommy is saying.
The retail place is open as well.
School's been open since June third.
All right.
All right, well, clearly, the process is broken. I think we can all agree on that. I make a motion to declare the process broken.
Can we amend the motion to require that they pay for the expenses of installation of flashers as a contingency of, uh, approval?
I don't think you can make approval contingent on that. It would be, um.
CO is already issued.
I don't approve, I, I deny.
And go back and do what they're supposed to do.
We do have a.
Back to us on each individual thing.
Yeah, since we have a motion on the floor, I will state, the reason I seconded the motion is, these are, in general, these are either basic, basic liberties in design or improvements. That's why I support the motion. I, in no way support how we got here. And, uh, someone less interested in private property rights would not probably be supporting this, but, I mean, I just, I implore somebody, somewhere, to find a way to make these things work better when we do this, because this is broken. We are, if, if we can, if we can get to the point we're at now, where businesses are operating, and all these items on the site plan not only weren't done, but were done in a different way or not at all, then why am I, why is it in front of me? Why am I having to talk through it for two hours, like, two years ago? Uh, you know, it's, something's, something's not right here.
All right, we have a motion, uh, properly before us. Anyone else wanna make a comment before I call for the vote? Seeing no one wishing to do so, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of, what are we doing, approving the site plan?
No. No, these are amendments to the zoning.
The amendments, there's not an ordinance.
The motion was to approve, I believe.
So it's a motion to approve?
With the chain link.
The changes to the site plan, right?
Yeah, approve the amendments, including the, including the ten link, ten foot.
Chain link fence.
Chain, vinyl coated chain link fence.
All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign? All right, so motion fails. Let me get who voted yes. So I had Jensen, yes. I had Rowe, yes, and I think I had Lamott, yes, is that right? And everybody else voted no. All right, so where does that leave the applicant, David?
His zoning request has been denied, so he's, needs to build according to what was already approved previously.
I do want to.
Before this whole process started.
All right.
There could be another motion on the table, or, I don't want to give you all the different.
I do want, I do want to make a comment.
Ryland?
Just, just a quick note. Those of you that voted against this, you've, what you have done is you have approved the construction of a rib high wrought iron fence around a basketball court.
So let, let me give a rationale while I, while I did that. I felt like that the owner probably does want to change that, and probably would try to somehow work back through. If I voted yes?
I don't know, he's already showed he doesn't want to work with us.
So maybe that'll get communicated. So that's the reason I voted no.
Well, then maybe he won't have basketball there until he does the right thing, comes back here, each individual motion, and does the right thing, and then we would approve it. You know, listen, I'm in this business. It's offensive. I, I want more private property than anybody else, but I have to go through this the exact same time. And you don't go through and go, I'm just gonna do whatever I want in a town, and expect the guys sitting, and ladies sitting up here to go, oh, sure, well, yeah, that looks better now, thank you. They, they just subverted the entire process.
Dennis, did you have a comment?
My thought is in, to ask the council to consider each item as a motion, each item individually. For example, like Ryland mentioned about the chain link, but I'm philosophically opposed to chain link, I can't vote for it. But I understand the ten foot, okay? I understand the canopies, I understand the, the artificial turf. I may not understand why we took out fountains, but if you were to look at them individually, and that way, the applicant may have some type of, something he can work with.
Thank you, sir. Are we changing the irrigation specifications?
No, those were there to prove that there's irrigation in the area where the palms are going.
But, so we had canopy, that was an exception.
Yes, adding the three canopies.
We had the chain link fence versus the wrought iron fence. And we had the moving of the shrubs.
If you go to page 196 of the, of the packet, they're listed.
And removing the fountains.
And eliminating the.
Yeah, so I would recommend there's.
Eleven items.
There's eleven items, starting on page 196, maybe we should just go through each one.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add, you can consider each of them individually, you don't have to vote on each of them tonight either, you can continue some.
All right.
Can I add, I wish the, the owner was actually here, so he could talk a little bit more about it, but I know that whenever he was asking for the artificial turf, it was, had to do with the playground, I don't know what the specifications are these days about what the, what the ground surface is like around playground equipment, but apparently, there are rules about this, where it has to be, have a cushion. And so that was his reason for the artificial turf around the playground.
All right, so gentleman has his hand up back there, but I don't know who he is. If you want to come identify yourself, we'll see if you can speak.
Thank you so much. My name is Omprakash Goyal, I go by OT. I am with Sanjay Joshi Wonderland Plaza. My address is 2008 Davin Lane, Lewisville, Texas, 75067. I like to make a comment on artificial turf, basically, you know? That's for the playgrounds. The turf that we are putting there, it is sport quality turf. The name of turf itself is called multi-stuff, multi-sport. Excuse me, my throat is a little sore today. But, and it has, you know, particular process that has to follow its, you know, grading has to be certain way done with, and then there is a pad, two and a quarter inch padding underneath the turf. So it gives about eight foot fall, fall height. The kids fall from eight foot, they don't, they can't have a head injury, so it prevents head injury. So that was the reason, and it is a little bit, you know, recent item that was, you know, most, mostly used on all the, you know, playgrounds, especially, you know, in trophy club, also, I've seen, right next to this high school, they have a turf also. Most commonly, mulch is used, that's the most cheapest, you know, item, but here, we have all, you know, rich families, so the school is a little bit, you know, upgraded. So that's why we use this turf, which is a little bit expensive, but you know, it looks good, and it gives more protection. And it, it is, you know, it's under specification of all A S T M requirement and D F P S requirements.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, so does anybody wish to try to deal with part of the issues?
Let me just say that my vote, you can go one by one by one, my vote's not gonna change, because I have no confidence that they will do what's on this site plan. We've already given them a C O, we've already approved everything, and they did not do what we specified in a direct motion. The motion was made, staff didn't follow it, the applicant didn't follow it, so I'm not gonna change my vote here until they finish what is required by motion, by council motion. It's, it's, we were very clear.
All right, Councilmember Jensen?
So here's my question, they have a C O. What can we possibly do right at this point?
Not approve this stuff until they.
But what?
That's our leverage.
They don't have to do a darn thing.
That's our only leverage.
So why are we even talking about it?
They would have to remove this stuff.
Oh, they wouldn't.
Yeah, this would have to be removed, and I'm not sure what that does.
If it's not.
To occupancy rules or licensing rules. Probably have certain licensing with, with different fencing around different areas.
So let me deal with a couple things. First of all, there's the canopies. Canopies are in different from the plan, right? The original plan. They didn't.
They were not on the original plan.
They put in fixed canopies. So would we require them to go change the canopies to be what was on the original plans?
The canopies are brand new. Oh, and they're not installed, I mean, they're, they're not there at all.
Okay, so the canopies are installed, so that's one issue to deal with. Secondly is, there is the removal of the fountains, did they remove them?
They were never installed.
They were never installed, so they're not there. All right, then there's the chain link fence. Currently, there's no chain link fence?
There is a chain link fence.
Okay.
The owner is aware that.
And had they installed the artificial turf?
Yes.
So with denial of this, what will they do about canopies?
Not have them.
Or go do the original? There were no original?
No.
So they would have no canopies? They would, and what about the fountains?
They would have to install them.
They'd have to install them.
Now, there was never any specs of how big or small this fountain is.
And the fence is currently a chain link fence that there, that is there?
Around the basketball court, there is one.
And what would we require them to do?
They'd have to go back to the wrought iron.
Original wrought iron.
Now, actually, on the original plan, it doesn't show an area for basketball court, it's all just sod.
Right, because I would have had the conversation about basketball two years ago.
Technically, they'd have to rip up the concrete.
Or more.
Well, the many of you go.
How did they get this far with nobody catching them? Doesn't somebody go in every week?
Too busy worrying about the Holiday Inn every day.
They were stopped when, when this was noticed, it was different from the site plan.
But they got a C O.
Because that was just based on the other stuff and the, the safety issues.
All right, so does anybody on council wish to make a motion?
I would say something real quick. So I keep hearing safety, safety, safety. We want the turf for safety, we want a ten foot chain link fence for safety. Well, how about the crosswalk and flashers, so these kids don't get hit by cars? I think that's safety related. So if they're so concerned with all these changes for safety, then just follow the plan with the crosswalk and the flashers, and then they get their eleven things, they don't have to take up this and that, and install fountains and uninstall. It's very simple, I think.
All right, anyone on council wishing to make a motion? All right.
I just, I have one parting comment, and I'm, it's a shame that the property owner isn't here. Shortly after the first meeting we had, which you probably remember, we went a long time going over that site plan, and, and, and the, the crosswalk thing was discussed as long as, among several other things. I saw the property owner over at Starbucks, like, a week later. He stopped in, sat down, said, hey, you're, you're on the council, right? Yeah, we, and we went and talked about this project, and he was telling me some stuff about what he wanted to do with the retail and everything. He acted like a guy that wanted to work with us. Does anybody feel like we got a guy that wants to work with us now? No. I want you guys to please deliver this message. This is a school, okay? Our neighbors' kids are gonna be there. There, there are things here that if somebody operates a school, they should have had in the plan on the first day. So don't put me in a position of having to tell my neighbors why I approved something that doesn't have adequate setup for kids, because here's the problem we have. We have amendments that the council doesn't want to approve because of the cluster that this is devolved into, but we have an approved plan that isn't sufficient for an, a, a school with small children in it. So it's a lose-lose for me. So I think there's a path forward, I hope that you see it. Let's do the right thing, last chance.
All right, anybody else want to make a motion? Hearing none, we will move on. The net is that the request was denied. Item number 14, case PD AMD 1703, Holiday Inn Screening, Conduct a Public Hearing Regarding Request to Amend Ordinance Number 2016-28 P and Z, Plan Development District Number 25, to amend the elevations and add screening plans and signage plans for Holiday Inn, Owned Lot 3R3 of Trophy Wood Business Center, generally located on the northwest corner of Plaza Drive and East T W King Road. We are entering the public hearing at 8:22. Anybody wishing to speak during public hearing? Yes, sir. Please identify yourself for the record again, please.
Chuck Lanza? Need me to restate my address again?
Please.
119 Inverness Drive, here in Trophy Club. So further to what was just discussed, we have the situation with the Holiday Inn and the screening issue, and, you know, my original intent to come tonight was to talk about aesthetically the issue. I've been driving it by, by there for months now, looking at it, saying to myself, surely this could not have been part of the original design plan for this property. There's no way, right? And, and, you know, can the council approve this, which I knew they wouldn't, because it's just aesthetically an eyesore, right? So in finding out about the meeting tonight, and decided to come and voice my opinions, I went on the website, I looked at the plan, the screen, looks like a, you know, a thoughtful way of handling it after the fact, right? And you made, Councilman Rowe made several mentions of that. And, but I guess, further to what I just sat here and listened to, is how do we prevent this from happening in the future, as I stated earlier, on future development in the town? Because you just cited a situation here with Wonderland Plaza. I suspect something similar happened with the approval of the, what is now Wood Spring Hotel, it was previously another name. Now we have that issue to deal with, but it's not really aesthetic issue, but it's more of a safety issue. But back to the Holiday Inn, and the other, the other point is the development time here. So I'm, I'm curious as to why the project has taken as long as it has. Typically, a hotel that size, year, two years, year and a half tops. It's taken far, far too long, and we've all had to live through the construction phase. I don't know if the developer ran out of funding. I'm not sure exactly what the problem was, but I would, I would love to hear some commentary. I don't know if that's allowable during this process, but it, it certainly has taken a long, long time to, to develop. And then further to that, you know, I'm, I'm just ask the council to be mindful, since we're talking about approvals after the fact and concessions that are being asked to the council, that perhaps the council can request some safety measures for this property. I don't even know if that's been addressed, or if it's part of the plan, because we've run into that issue, obviously, across the road, in what is now become the epicenter of our town, right? I mean, that's kind of the, the core of this small town, the Trophy Club, and it sure would be nice to have some, you know, potential safety measures implemented at this hotel, you know, just for the benefit of our citizens in, in that area. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Chuck.
Hey, Mr. Lanza, before, since we can talk to you now?
Yes.
And we can ask you questions, is Grant your son?
Yes.
He did some yard work for me two years ago. No, three years ago, two or three years ago.
Off topic.
The biggest stump you've ever seen in your life got pulled out of the ground. No, I just, I gotta, I gotta praise this kid, guys. I gotta praise this kid. You believe in community, I believe in community. The biggest, I don't know how, him and one of his buddies pulled a stump out of the ground, and a bunch of other stuff.
Thank you, Ryland.
Yeah, and, no, did not charge me enough money at all.
I'll remind him of that.
I will say, Chuck, just quickly, we will have, obviously, very soon, the police station will be right there.
Yeah.
So we will be really looking at making sure that is, like you said, it's the focal point of the town.
Right.
With, with police and town hall there, we're gonna make sure that's an extremely safe area.
Great.
We're gonna do everything possible.
All right, thank you, Chuck.
Very good, thank you.
All right, we will close the public hearing, if no one else seeks the floor, at 8:27. All right, item B, Consider Take Appropriate Action Regarding A Request To Amend Ordinance Number 2016-28 P and Z, Plan Development District Number 25, To Amend The Elevations And Add Screening Plans And Signage Plans For Holiday Inn, Owned Lot 3R3 Of Trophy Wood Business Center, Generally Located On The Northwest Corner Of Plaza Drive And West T W King. Lisa, do you make some comments?
This project, they are, they're nearing completion. Basically, they are proposing to put up a screen, which is required for mechanical equipment anyway, that's seen from the public, and adding a sign to it for the restaurant that is there, or that will be there. That restaurant was gonna be the Crooked Pint, that they are now gone, and it's gonna be the Magnolia Bar And Grill now, that is run by Holiday Inn. So that is where the sign comes from. The exhaust fans and the ducts, they were added after the fact, when out in the field, they, I believe that the fans were put up against the building, which is not compliant with code, with international code, and so they're required to move at least 10 feet away from any wall, and so that's how they came out, as far as they did. Of course, now we can all see them, and so the applicant is trying to come up with a way to rectify that situation, since they still have to be 10 feet from the wall. The, what they're proposing is a gray powder coated metal louvers that are actually slanted upwards, so that the air still gets through from the exhaust fan, but it's going up, and anyone that's underneath cannot see through the metal louvers to the mechanical equipment, that also direct all that hot air up rather than down. This screen will be about 45 feet across, and it'll be five foot 10 inches, which will cover the height of these exhaust fans, and will go back on either side with returns to the building, that will have about three feet on either side, so that maintenance can get in, so that they are completely screening these, these exhaust fans and ducts. The signage for Magnolia Bar And Grill is actually, it's black aluminum, or black illuminated channel letters that happen to glow white at night. channel letters that happen to glow white at night. Um, they are planned to be on the screen. Um, at P and Z, a couple of the commissioners thought that that might draw attention to the mechanical equipment, while a couple others thought, no, that'll help screen it better. Um, they, um, also talked about the color of the vents, the durability of the product. Um, and in addition, the plans at the time said Magnolia Bar and Restaurant and we were given correct plans, which are in those packets that say Magnolia Bar and Grill. Um, the P and Z recommended approval with the vote of four to three, um, including the, the change from restaurant to grill. So, um, staff's worked closely with the applicant, trying to come up with a solution for this. Um, and so, we feel like, you know, based on, um, feedback from council when we were looking for screening ideas, um, that this is something that I'm gonna recommend approval on.
So the, if we approved ordinance 217 dash 17, it's approving with the screening and the letters on the screen? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Um, so, uh, does the applicant wish to make any comments? I know we got people here from the group. Please state your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Donovan Morrow. You need my street address?
Please.
1017 Randy Road, Cedar Hill, Texas, 75104. And I just request that this gets approved.
All right, that's it?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Uh, so Lisa, I did have a question. I think P and Z discussed the idea of signage not being on the, the screening portion that was there.
Yes.
Originally, the signage was supposed to be on the canopy or the building?
Um, I believe it's on the canopy, just below where the, um, screening was. But I believe it was also way further to the, uh, east, but still on a canopy.
Okay.
I believe.
All right. Phillip?
So if the sign is not on the screening, you still will not be able to see? This, the sign has nothing to do with screening, correct?
Correct. It's, it's the way that the louvers are, um, slanted, it's supposed to be where you can't see any of the mechanical equipment through there at all unless you're actually above the louvers looking down through the, through them.
Okay, and, and so back, back when this was, so, I've been here from the beginning, the very beginning, uh, Lamont and I. So this is actually, just to correct you, this is the third restaurant concept, not the second. Back when this was approved on April the 2nd of 2014, contrary to what P and Z and, and council were, were, uh, were told, um, what, what did staff, um, think that this was gonna look like? I mean, was, were, so what we're seeing now, I know, is extending it and coming out. What was the expectation when, back in April the 2nd of 14, when this was approved? Was it just-
What was on the plans as far as the exhaust fans?
What was it gonna look like? Just a vent, but not coming out of the building?
What's on the plans, um, which I'm not a building inspector and reviewer, but what's on the plans is an exhaust fan that is up against the building.
But, but you would still see it?
Normally allowed, you know, maybe certain, it would be something that you wouldn't be able to see 'cause it'd be set 10 feet back on the building.
Okay. So then, on December the 3rd of 2015, they came back again and they revised it because the, uh, and I got an email today, the kitchen addition inside the building, which included the addition of a second grease hood. Uh, the original submitted was one grease hood and one steam developed hood. So now, December comes along, December of 2015, and they're adding more. So again, is that things that would be seen or would not be seen?
Uh, they wouldn't be, well, I don't know what the plans looked like then. Um, if, I can ask Tommy to come up here and answer that a little bit better.
Yeah, 'cause I, 'cause it goes to- 'Cause this will go to my point later on that, um, well, go ahead.
Tommy?
Tommy Yuzey, Director of Community Development. The plans from day one identified that the hoods were gonna be there. There was an original discussion back in 13 with the owner's representative when he stated that the vent was gonna come out the west side of the building.
Correct.
Staff was never told about that. As far as building inspections.
Okay. It was never approved. A staff approved something different than what was presented? Or, or they, they presented, they, they got approval on something different than what they presented, council?
The facade was approved apparently through P and Z and council. Nobody ever looked into the fact that we had two restaurants, or a restaurant in the front, that clearly identified the only place for the vent to terminate was on that roof.
Except for the P and Z on December, in December of 2013, when they just, when they asked the question of the applicant. But that didn't get down to staff, is what you're saying, right?
Right, and part of this is that what comes to y'all is not the building plans and so it's possible they didn't even have a floor plan at the time and, you know, the applicant, you know, made a mistake on that.
Dennis, I think, has a comment to make. Stay there, Tommy. Come on, Dennis. But I was having Tommy stay and not leave.
And I wanna follow up once and for all.
A cou- a couple of things. Um, the reason, very specific, the sign of the restaurant has to be, it, discussed and determined here. Correct me if I'm wrong, is that every time they change the name, it has to change the ordinance 'cause it's very specific in the approval on the ordinance. The name of the sign, the Crooked Pint and whatever, that's one. Two, the permit plans do show a vent coming out the front. Uh, just, it's a little square indicating a vent. That's all, and it would be easy to overlook. It's not unusual for plans to say the vending person or the air conditioning mechanical person is designed to satisfy the code.
Okay.
Now, bear, bear with me just for a second. The other is, the original plans are, or, I don't wanna say nebulous, are confusing as to whether or not there was to be a canopy there or not, or whether it was the front of the building. Then the other lesson learned is, because the applicant did tell us very specifically that it was going out the side of the building and would be on the building very similar to the one vent that's on breadwinners on the back of that building, um, we didn't make it part of the motion. That it should show, that's a lesson learned that if the, if the applicant says something or whatever, that we need to make it part of the deal. Otherwise, how does staff know what was said? But those are the things, but the, the sign has to be included.
I, I disagree.
I took it from, from P and Z, I took it on the basis of, it's a screw up all the way along in multiple fashions as to how we got here. We're here, the fire code people convinced me that they gotta come out there. And then the question is, how do you terminate them?
Okay, so, so let me dis- Let me disagree with you on one thing. The, the disagreement I have with you is that, that there's no way that we can, when we discuss something, make every little thing part of the motion. We do, there's, we can't do that. So I disagree with you on that, that, that we made a mistake back then. It was, it was clearly presented to P and Z and then to council that, that they would go out the west and not only would they go out the west, but if you look at the, uh, minutes, which back then are word for word, it says that they, it says that they will have additional landscaping to, to shield that those vents coming out of the west. So, so it, it's, the intent was there, you know? It's, it's very difficult to then sit up here and make a motion ev- on every little item.
Understand, and we had a P and Z member who is-
Hold on. So the point I'm trying to make is what, is, is what is on there now exactly what would have been on there on 42 of 14 with one or two, and then 12, 3 of 15 when they added more? Is that same size? Would that, is, is that what we would've seen without the extension having to come out from the-
I'm sorry, I can't, all I can tell you is-
Okay, who can answer that? That's what I'm try- That's what I'm trying to ask.
Detail sheet M1 of the plans.
Tommy, move to the microphone. Thank you.
Detail sheet M1 of the plans, as well as detail, or sheet M10 of the plans. Identify both, the one that's being talked about coming straight out the face of the building, which is not physically possible 'cause it's a window. Um, and that's, that's the, the steam developed, which is the, the, uh, washing machine, dishwasher. Uh, and then the one vent that does come out where the existing hood is, you know, exhibited, that's the only place it can go out.
So it would've been that same size?
Would've been the exact same.
Okay. So here's, here's what upsets me. Uh, on June 23rd, 2016, this is what we were presented. When we, when we said, okay, we're gonna allow this sign right here to go there, there's no vents, big vents, all that coming out of there. I bet P and Z would've made a different motion, I bet council would've made a bit, a different decision had the renderings been correct. And the renderings were not correct, and this is after 4, 4, uh, 42 of 14 and 12, 3 of 15, when we got it on 623 of 2016. So that's what, I, I tell you, it makes me wanna just say, screen it, but no sign. And I probably will make that motion because they misrepresented what they were bringing to us.
All right, so I'm gonna come to Ryland in just a second. There was a question asked earlier, I don't remember what it was, but Donovan was gonna answer it. He kinda got up. Is it Donovan, is that right? Like you were gonna answer it and then we kinda went away. Do you know what you were even gonna answer?
I think you were talking about the louvers.
Okay, come on up to the, all right. Let's get all the facts.
Without the sign, without the signage up there, I mean, you will not be able to see through it. It's like looking through those shades right there.
Right. That's what I thought. Okay, thank you, sir. All right, Ryland.
Yeah, so, um, what I'm, what I'm hearing is, you go all the way back to that December 2013 P and Z meeting when ventilation question was asked. And, you know, the, the irony there is that P and Z's not approving mechanical plan. They're not approving, um, actual building plans per se. They're approving elevation and other things that are, that apply to matters of zoning. However, it's all the same building, right? The mechanical drives the exterior, zoning drives the exterior. All three of those things come together. You have the design, the regulations, and the mechanical design, right? They all, so if we're not all talking to each other, then that system doesn't work. So when Planning and Zoning Commission says, has a meeting about something, that's something that they are approving, it needs to have already been verified. And I understand that we had a different planner at that time and a different damn near everybody, but, um, and, and we're in a lot better place now, but regardless. It needs to be ascertained at that time that the aesthetic portion that P and Z is, is, uh, is reviewing is, is perfectly compliant with the mechanical. And if the mechanical hasn't been presented, if that hasn't been turned in yet, if, if we don't have those plans, then you can't, you can't do the elevation because the zoning requires that mechanical, roof mounted mechanical is screened. So how did we even get mechanical on the roof to begin with? How did mechanical on the roof in the plans ever get approved when the elevations didn't have the screening? Either the plans should've been denied, or the elevation should've been denied. Either way, one of those two should've been denied, whichever came second, and that's the bottom line because something had to have been against the ordinance at that point, right? Either way. Um, and that, and, and it's made, and it's made perfectly clear by the fact that Commissioner Mark Sadley and Commissioner Garrett Reed, both at that time, asked that exact question and wanted an answer. That's why we have boards, that's why we ask for people to participate and bring their knowledge is so that questions can get asked. How that doesn't get translated down to our professional staff is one of my giantest pet peeves over the last three years and two months, and it will continue to be. But I don't understand, um, how we got here. What we, what we have, what we have right now is a set of plans that don't conform, don't conform to the code of ordinances.
All right. Uh, Lamont, what did-
Couple of comments and a question to Ryland's point. I recall that, that December 30th meeting was a special meeting. I had to delay a trip to Corpus to be here because it had to be expedited. And here we are, 2017 and counting. Uh, when I first moved to Texas, December of 87, the first, the first expressions I heard was lipstick on a pig. And it seems to me every time we turn around, we're doing a different shade of lipstick on this thing. As far as I'm concerned, do we have a choice? I think putting the sign on the louv is, is less distracting. If we're gonna go in that direction. If we're not doing a sign, that's a different story. Why did we go from grill to restaurant?
It went from restaurant to grill.
But the other way.
Oh, the other way, whatever.
It was wrong on the plans and Holiday Inn's name wasn't here.
There's not a, this is the first Magnolia with, um, Holiday Inn and so-
Since we're talking about that-
It's in up with the name.
Who's managing that? Do we know who's managing that?
Holiday Inn.
Holiday Inn, this Holiday Inn or Holiday Inn Corporate?
This Holiday Inn.
Exactly the opposite of what we were promised when we allowed the alcohol in the first place.
Crooked Pint.
Crooked Pint. That we would have a skilled operator in there. Now we don't have that. All right. All right, so I had a couple of questions and then I think Alicia had her hand up. To me, if I, if I go just to the topic that we're here for, uh, I think the louvered screening satisfies the ugly look. Uh, what I preferred, maybe it was handled differently. I can't stop that now, I can't change that, but I think the louver will look okay. And if, if the people have done things appropriately researching it, I won't be able to see it from the road or from the side. All I'll say is that I can see it from the road in my car, I could see it from the side. I'm gonna be really disappointed if it's not right. Secondly, uh, the signage, um, I don't necessarily care whether it's on the louvers or if it's on the canopy itself. To me, it might look better on the louvers than on the canopy just because it's one more thing to be something else and another place to be on the canopy. So, that's kind of where I am. I don't like that I'm here, um, but I understand you had to come before us to change the name on the sign. And I understand that we allowed you to go forward and construct the ventilation and I'll bet, we're told, that the ordinance required screening a long time ago. So I don't know how long they've known that they've needed screening, but our code says if you put something on the roof, mechanical, it has to be screened. So whether we told them or it was, they should've known it, um, that should've been solved a long time before now, in my opinion. At least it should've come to us and been solved. All right. So Donovan, you have a comment, then I'm gonna go to Alicia.
It's on the original set of plans with the second hood that we would screen it.
It's just never been done.
It just had a detailed elevation shot on it.
Okay, all right. Okay. Alicia?
Um, I agree, rock in a hard place. It, we're where we are. So if we're gonna have the screening, I think the sign might make it look like it's supposed to be there. Not that it was just thrown up at the last minute to hide some ugly mechanical things. So, um, at night with it lit, um, would that affect the visibility of what it's screening?
Uh, no, no ma'am.
Still won't, okay. So that was my only comment, that aesthetically, I think if we had the restaurant sign on there, it would look like it was actually supposed to be there.
All right, and Phillip had his hand up.
Uh, yeah, I, I, I disagree. I think that this, I, originally I thought that the sign should go on it, but then when I see it, I think that it just draws your attention to the screening. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the screening without the sign. I guess I need to, to make a motion to change the name on the original. They, they're already approved for signage, but it's, do we have to-
The motion is to approve the louvers without the sign.
Right.
So you're saying, you're making a motion to approve the screening and you're not addressing the sign at all? You're saying no sign?
No sign. No sign on the louvers.
To me, if you're saying no sign, you don't, you don't need to address the content of it.
Okay.
So you can make a motion just to approve the louvered aspect of the canopy?
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's my motion. Yes.
Is the name of the, of the sign has to be addressed?
Well, technically, you can't-
From the Crooked Pint to the Magnolia?
Technically, we can't regulate content of a sign.
Well, but what does it say? I thought-
Thought you said the name was in the ordinance.
I thought, I thought the name was in the ordinance as approved in the motion. That, and, or it was on the plans that were, when they got their sign, plans approved for, and we're talking about this PD- we're talking about this PD, where it says the PD has to be part of the.
Typically, what you'd approve on a sign is location, square footage.
Right, I think it's less what the words are, and more the size, the appearance.
Okay. So I have a motion that doesn't have a second at this point, uh, to approve the louvers. Do I have a second?
I, I have a question on that. If, if they deny this sign on the louvers, are they gonna have to come back to us?
And where is it gonna be?
It depends, are you saying no sign, or you're just saying the sign on the building?
The sign, we've already approved, we've already approved a sign.
It's on the building.
It's already approved.
Goes back to that.
So there's no need to discuss that.
It's on the, it's on the canopy, below the louvers.
Yeah, it's already approved.
But to be, to be clear, does your motion also?
All my motion is, is to approve the screening. That's it. No sign, no sign.
But prohibit the sign from.
Right, no sign.
Okay.
That's my motion.
You don't have to even address the sign.
Because we already have a sign, they alre, they already have sign approval.
Okay, so I do have a second.
Basically, it's, you do, I think you'd have to address the sign to say that it's on the building, not the louvers.
And that's what I said.
I, I get it.
No sign.
But the sign that was approved.
Can we get a second or not?
Wasn't approved with the screening.
Wait a minute. Get a second.
All right, let's see if we get a second, otherwise the motion fails.
I'll, I'll second.
All right, so we have a second. Thank you, Alicia.
So when the original sign was approved, that was before the rendering with the louvers, correct?
Correct.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So we don't know how that's gonna look?
No, it, it's gonna be right below it, it's gonna be on that canopy.
It's gonna be on the canopy.
Now, can you see it from the road?
I don't care, I, I would not approve anything for these people.
I just think that's gonna look not as nice.
Alicia, did you get your answers?
I did.
Okay, Ryland?
Yeah, um, so if we, um, if we, if we don't approve the screening, because the screening is a change to the elevation, and that's, that's what's before us today, is the, is the elevation in the PD. If we don't approve the screening, then that mechanical on the roof is, is, is in violation. And so, and so if the mechanical on the roof is in violation, then it would need to be remediated by the property owner. And I believe that that's what needs to happen, is that they need to go back to the proper design of the way, the standards, that this body and this, the way this process is supposed to work, intended for it to work, which is to have scrubbers on the side of the building facing west, and not roof mounted, and, uh, not roof mounted at the, on the canopy, at whatever. And I understand that you're gonna tell them it's gonna cost a lot of money, and et cetera, et cetera.
If we put it on the side of the building, on the west side, what do you think's gonna happen right there? You're gonna see it from the road, and you're still gonna have to screen it.
No, I'm talking about, I'm not talking about the exact same, I'm not talking about the exact same equipment mounted there.
Well, you'd have to have it.
I'm talking about a completely different design. Breadwinners was used as an example.
I get it.
Yeah, that, and that was what P and Z was in, was implying. And maybe one day we'll get someone whose job is to build things that understands that.
All right, uh, sorry you're coming in so late to this.
Yeah.
We understand that. That's, we understand.
So, so I want to clarify something. He said that in the design, it was screened. So what happened to that? He just stated earlier that.
Thomas said it was on the set of plans.
It wasn't detailed.
So it's, it was screened?
I mean, regardless, if, if it was up against the wall, you're not gonna be able to see that from the street anyway, if there's a canopy coming at least ten feet out.
But if it's roof mounted, it has to be screened, no matter where it is.
It's a note, it's not actual design.
If you're standing on the ground and you can't see it.
It's a note on the side that all mechanicals have to be screened.
So why, what are we doing here, then? If mechanicals have to be screened as a note?
I meant to the ground.
I, I don't mean to take up Holiday Inn's side. Oh, okay, it bugs me to have to do that. But, um, I did have a visit onsite with Code and the fire people. And they convinced me, as a builder developer, retired though, that it was not feasible, forget money, just not feasible to go out to the west. The reason being is to, to the immediate west of this kitchen is a stairwell.
Mm-hmm.
You can't pierce the stairwell. Then behind the stairwell is the fire stand pipe room. You know, you can't pierce the stand pipe room. Then the other proposal was to fur down the hallway. Well, the fire people were talking about the fact that you, it's a, it's a evacuation, it, so they convinced me.
Did you discuss going up?
It was mentioned, but not seriously, um, and at the time, I wish Ry, uh, not, I wish Garrett had been available for, for consulting, but he wasn't, okay? It was, that was one of the things Garrett originally said, originally black pipe, straight up. Um, anyway, so, I'm just saying, at that meeting, the, to comply with what Mr. Patel said originally, which is, hey, I'll take it out the side, they convinced me that it wasn't possible. Then to go straight back to the back, they convinced me that since this is a, um, grease trap thing, and, and heat, that the length to go to the back, um, to have a slope, a downslope for grease, or whatever, was not feasible. So it had nothing to do with money. And I fought it orig, and I, anyway, I just wanted to say that that's nice, but it's, it's, it's not building wise. You'd have to consider some, some consult, before you go out to the west. You wanna go up, that's a different story.
All right, so, uh, my comment is, um, I support the motion the way it stands, and that is, I think the screening has to go there, it's gotta be screened, this seems like a reasonable solution to look at it. And as far as signage, um, the signage has already been approved, it's just a matter of what the name is, and we don't have to approve the name, is my understanding.
Is that true?
Location.
That's, that's not true in any other town. If I want to change my sign to a different name, I have to go back to the town.
Well, they still have to get a permit through the permitting office, um, but I'm more concerned with the location of the sign.
I'm more concerned that we were promised one restaurant, and it was gonna be managed by a certain amount of people, talented people, and now that's being changed. So I may not want to approve a new sign.
The sign, that's not, it's apples and oranges.
But the motion before you is not approving the sign.
It's not to approve a business.
I'm not saying, but I'm, I'm making sure, I'm making myself known here, that at some point, that sign, they're gonna come back and try to change the sign to Magnolia, and I want to know if I have to approve it, because I don't think I have to.
I don't know that the.
I don't think it comes back to you.
I don't know if it comes back to you.
I don't know that.
I thought, I thought it did, but we're being, we're under a different attorney at that time.
Unless they're changing the.
We specifically said it was only for Crooked Pint.
That was the sub. That'd be for the alcohol sub, though.
That was the alcohol.
Yeah, so that would come back, I guess. So the supper's gonna come back.
Sign, content, I'm sorry.
So the supper's gonna come back, not the sign.
Well, actually, the TABC permit was in the owner's name, and it still is, and, um, kind of as a supplementary, it was under Crooked Pint, but it's already been changed to Magnolia. It's the same use, the same owner, the same location.
But we were very clear, because I made, I made sure with you that they had to follow the exhibits, or that was not.
Which on the elevations, we'll look at it.
No, the exhibits on the sub. And, and obviously, that don't follow the exhibits, because the exhibits have Crooked Pint.
All right, uh, I'm gonna move us forward. The motion and the. Second on the floor is dealing with the screening, and is saying with no sign. So we're not talking about the content of the sign, we're just saying the screening without the sign. So let's discuss that particular thing, and if you have no discussion, I'll call for the vote. Yes, Eric?
Why do you not want the name on the sign? I mean, on the screen?
Because we already have an approval for a location, and I'm fine with that location.
That was before.
I understand that, I just, I think it'd look better like Breadwinners is, is on the screen.
I would agree.
I agree.
I would too, but that's not your motion.
Well, after, I'm new here, so after we do this motion, can we make another motion?
Deny this.
Make a motion to amend.
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion to amend, adding the, uh, sign to the screen.
Magnolia Bar and Grill.
Magnolia Bar and Grill.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion to amend by Jensen, and I have a second by Lamont. So what's before us is the amendment.
Okay, so I'll speak to the amendment. The reason that I left it where it was at, is because I have no confidence that when they change the name again, that they will remove it from the screening. So I want to keep it small, down at the bottom, so that it's easy to remove. You put it up there, I have no confidence that they'll remove it.
I agree.
That's my whole reasoning.
Who seconded it? Jensen moved?
Lamont.
Lamont. Thank you. All right. Anybody else want to comment about the motion to amend? I support the motion to amend. Anybody else?
Yeah, and I'll say further, that very few restaurants have their name on a hotel. We had this discussion way back.
Copeland's does. Copeland's and South Lake does.
Very few.
All right, so, um, I'm gonna call the question on the amendment. The amendment is to change the main motion to allow the sign on the.
Not allow, require.
Require the sign on the louvered screen.
Magnolia Bar and Grill. Do you want to mention the name?
I did in my motion.
He did in his motion.
Just to make sure.
All right. All right, any other discussion on the amendment? All right, all in favor of the amendment, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. Uh, it does pass with Schaffner, no, and an abstention, I believe, by you, is that right?
I was too lazy to agree with him.
It was a no, okay. All right, Kurtz was a no, and, uh, Lamont, Sanders, Rowe, Jensen, Fleury were, yes. All right, so, uh, we're back to the motion as amended.
Okay.
So the motion as amended is to allow, to require the screening on the canopy, the louvered screening, and place the sign of, whatever the sign's supposed to be wording wise, on the louver. All right, that's the motion as amended, am I right? Correct me if I'm wrong. Jensen's thinking, so.
Is the owner here?
No, sir, he's not.
No. Tell him to get this thing done.
I'm making it happen, Bo.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so we have the motion as amended before us, all those in favor of the motion as amended, show your hands. Uh, all opposed, so I have Schaffner, Kurtz, and Rowe against. Schaffner, Kurtz, and Rowe, no. And the rest, yes, and it does carry, uh, it is dealt with. All right, thank you, Donovan.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, everybody. All right, before we go to fifteen, uh, I am going to take a ten-minute recess. It is nine oh two. It's, uh, nine eleven, and we have reconvened into regular session after recess, item number fifteen. A case, O A M D seventeen oh one, treehouses, consider to take appropriate action regarding a request to amend section fourteen oh two, oh fifty-two. General definitions, section fourteen oh two, oh fifty-two, entitled general definitions of division two, entitled definitions of article fourteen oh two, entitled zoning ordinance of chapter fourteen, entitled zoning, of the town of Trophy Club Code of Ordinances to include a definition of treehouses, and amend subsection one A two, one A five, and six A of sections fourteen dot oh two dot two five three, entitled accessory structures and uses of division five, entitled supplementary district regulations of article fourteen point oh two, entitled zoning ordinance of chapter fourteen, entitled zoning of the town of Trophy Club Code of Ordinances to incorporate the regulation of treehouses, and repeal section three A of section fourteen dot oh two dot two fifty-three, entitled accessory structures and uses of division five, entitled supplementary district regulations of article fourteen point oh two, entitled zoning ordinance of chapter fourteen, entitled zoning to allow for treehouses. This is ordinance two seventeen dash eighteen. Lisa, any comments?
Um, this item is back, um, the, we are not required to do a public hearing, because the, um, the agenda item is the same. However, uh, we are simply requesting that the, um, children's playhouse definition is revised to include trees as a, um, as a support for the, for the playhouse, and to remove treehouses from the prohibited list. So I have the, um, the language for children's playhouse that, um, was slightly changed, the only difference is we took out the single-story wording, and there's now mention of supports when there wasn't before. Um, and for the prohibited structures, it simply was taking out treehouses for prohibited structures. So, um, at P and Z, they actually had a vote of four to three to recommend approval, um, questioning the need to amend the code, and removing the word tree from the definition, and, but staff recommends approval.
All right, Dennis, any comments?
No, sir.
All right, um, I would entertain a motion to approve two seventeen dash eighteen P and Z, which would allow clearly that treehouses can exist, if you want to do that. Otherwise, we end up with a conflict. Right? We don't approve this, we have a provision, prohibition that says no, but then you have this gray area that says you can have an accessory structure.
Make motion to approve ordinance twenty seventeen dash eighteen P and Z.
Second.
All right, moved by Rowe, seconded by Schaffner. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm like, sorry.
Yes, go ahead. Jensen?
I do not support having treehouses. Um, I support having kids' playhouses on the ground, but I do not support them in the air. It's not a safety thing, that's up to a parent. I think it's a, violates a, it's a violation of, of neighbors, though, to have one, I do not support.
I would.
All right, any other comments? Lamont?
I would agree with Eric's comments. Uh, it's been on the books since maybe the late eighties, early nineties, whatever. And plus, you have, almost half the town has, are HOAs, and from what I know, most of them are prohibit treehouses. So HOAs are subservient to town rules, and now you're gonna tell HOAs they're gonna allow treehouses throughout the whole town.
Actually, if the HOA says it's not allowed, then it would.
I, I think if, if, if a town has an ordinance or a rule, correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct him. Before I do.
If they're, you have the HOA in the town, if either one of them prohibits it, it's prohibited.
You sure?
Positive. Yeah, he's, yeah, I've litigated that case.
Are you sure? Are you sure?
Former president of an HOA, playing dumb.
And there are certain, now maybe ours is different than others'.
You'll get that notice on your house tomorrow.
We have it, we have, that if a town has an ordinance, we are subservient, the word is subservient, whatever the term is.
They, they coexist. The HOA and the.
Oh, good, I'll tell them.
All right, we have a motion and a second before us, any comments?
Yeah, I've got a question. If you build a playhouse right now, today in Trophy Club, how high can you go?
Twenty feet, I believe, is the maximum height.
Twenty feet, so I can go up twenty feet.
Except, well, okay, a playhouse, yeah.
Okay, so if I, if I add, if I take away treehouse to this, and I, and I want to put a treehouse, how, how high can I go?
If it's still a playhouse, because you didn't say anything about trees, twenty feet?
Twenty feet, okay.
No, but a treehouse that we're...
If you say it's a treehouse, it's prohibited currently.
No, I'm saying if, if...
If we pass it, it's, if we pass it, how high can you go?
Same as a playhouse.
Same.
Twenty feet.
Twenty feet.
Twenty feet. So either, no matter what, if I build a treehouse, if we take treehouse out of the prohibition and I can still only go twenty feet. If I want to build a playhouse, I can go twenty feet, so it's the same, it doesn't...
So really, you're just allowing people to utilize part of a tree for your playhouse. So there's really no difference, anyway.
The only, the only other thing that I might ask is, originally, I was wanting to put in that they're not permitted to be supplied with permanent electricity and/or water. Can, can they do that now?
No.
Okay, so there's no need to add that, okay.
Actually, to run.
That would make it an accessory structure, at which time it would then be subject to all of the accessory structure stuff that already exists.
And you could also argue that it's being used for habitation, which is part of the definition.
And all of the setbacks, everything would be the same that we have in here.
Whatever the accessory structure rules are...
Right, it's gotta be in the backyard, it's gotta be so far from the fence, it's gotta be so far, okay.
Yes, sir.
So nothing changes as far as, we're just eliminating treehouse as prohibited.
Correct.
Correct, all right.
Jensen?
So do you support twenty feet, Philip?
Do I support twenty feet? I, I'd rather have it lower, and I think Roland and I talked about this previously.
But why do we do that now?
We can do that. I'll make an amendment. I'll make an amendment to that playhouses as accessory structures are permitted up to fifteen feet in height from adjacent grade to the highest point of the roof.
What's the max?
Fifteen.
All right, I'll second.
All right. So we have a motion to amend by adding that the limitation of height on a...
Playhouse.
Playhouse is fifteen feet, and it was seconded by Rowe.
Me, yes, sir. I, I'll, I'll say I'm right in the wheelhouse of the, not so much, I don't know anybody that has a treehouse per se, because you gotta be a do-it-yourselfer to have a treehouse, and we're not allowed do-it-yourselfers around anymore in this day and age. But I, I have a five-year-old and a two-and-a-half-year-old, and so everybody has some kind of, something where you walk up a ladder and you're in an elevated playhouse, and fifteen feet is probably the sweet spot for the top of the roof. You know, you're up about eight, nine, ten feet, and then you're, so, four, five feet worth of height inside there. So I think that's an appropriate number, twenty seems a little, little excessive. I don't believe that hits anybody, and if that helps, that helps this overall comprehensive ordinance make more sense, then I support the change.
All right, any other comments about the amendment? Hearing none, call for the vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, the amendment passed and was unanimous. All right, we're back to the motion as amended, any other comments? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. The motion is to approve ordinance twenty seventeen dash eighteen P N Z as amended, limiting the maximum feet to fifteen, maximum foot to fifteen feet height. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion as amended, please show your hand. All opposed, same sign. It does carry with Lamont against.
Mean old man.
And I just want to say thanks to Lisa, because this was way more than what I thought it was gonna be.
Yeah, I know, yeah. It's the proverbial can of worms.
I'm gonna go build a treehouse.
All right, item sixteen, consider to take appropriate action regarding a record, record vote on a not-to-exceed fiscal year 2018 ad valorem tax rate and to schedule two public hearings to meet truth in taxation requirements and are as required by the Charter and related matters. There's a staff report that goes through the calculation process of our rates, and we are required to set a not-to-exceed rate and to call for public hearings for August the twenty-second and September the twelfth. Anybody wishing to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, oh, did, did you have something?
No, no, all right, go ahead.
Do you have it written down already?
No.
I make a motion to set a not-to-exceed rate of forty-six point eight cents per one hundred dollars, tax rate, and setting two public hearings for Tuesday, August twenty-second, and Tuesday, September twelfth, 2017.
All right. And do I have a second?
Second. So, so, no, I just have a comment. I understand your motion, and I don't disagree with it, but this is just a not-to-exceed number, and would we be better off, keep, like we've done in the past, just placing it as what we were at, not to exceed the, the current rate? So in other words, we're at four, seven, three, would we be better off to, to put it at that number just in case something may come to us like it did last year, where we, not saying that we would, and I'd much rather go lower than four, six, eight, like what you're saying, but are we better off just doing what we've done in the past?
With...
Throwing it out there.
With the, that's a perfectly valid question, with the level of appraisal increases that literally everyone has seen. If we can't find half a cent, then it's on us. So I, I would, I, I mean, yeah, I, I, this is primarily procedural, but I do not feel comfortable voting for a not-to-exceed rate to hold the tax rate flat, given the amount of, the amount of increase that everyone's seeing in their property taxes, or property values, rather.
So to help me make this decision, Amber and John, I know that information about our budget and our tax rate and all of that has been in flux for weeks as you've been working through it. Help me if I'm wrong, but my memory is that at four, six, eight, we can fund paying cash for the ambulance and adopt a budget what we thought was going to be there with various things. It does not include the supplemental of the trail improvement.
Correct, Mayor.
So does everybody understand that? In our budget committee meeting, it was the consensus of the group to say, we think that the council's wishes are to approve an ambulance, and so we looked at the pros and cons of financing versus paying cash. Was it about eleven thousand in interest or thirteen over the life, I can't remember?
It's about fifteen.
Fifteen, interest for the life. So we felt like, go ahead and pay cash for it now, but in order to keep the rate at that level, it said, don't approve the supplemental for the trail project. So that's where we were. But we haven't seen a detailed budget at this point. So that, that's the reason, I think, you know, where Phil, where we were in the committee and what Philip is kind of alluding to is, setting the not-to-exceed at four, seven, three doesn't mean that I'm gonna accept a four, seven, three. From my standpoint, four, six, eight's the max I would go to, just me personally at this point. So I don't have a problem with that being my max, but I still haven't seen the entire budget, so that's my concern.
Yeah, and, and I don't, I, I agree with the motion. I, I've been very consistent on the trails project, that I think that that can be found in the budget in-house. And, and I'm not saying that we have to do everything in this physical year or next physical year. I think that it can be spread out over time, but I think they've shown that they can do that type of project in-house, and so I, I, I challenge staff to try to, to do that in-house. I'd, I'd, I agree with Roland. I'd like to even go lower than four, six, eight, but certainly, it's a good not-to-exceed number.
All right, any other comments? Call for the vote, all those in favor of the motion...
Who seconded it?
It was seconded by Lamont. Moved by Rowe, seconded by Lamont. All those in favor...
I think this is a roll call.
It is, I'm gonna roll call it, yes. All those in favor of adopt, adopting a not-to-exceed tax rate for fiscal year 2018 of zero point four six eight per one hundred dollar valuation and setting the public hearing dates of August twenty-second, 2017, and September twelfth, 2017. We are gonna show your, you're gonna say yea or nay, and I'm gonna call for the vote by place. Fleury?
Yea.
Jensen?
Yea.
Rowe?
Yea, yea.
Sanders, yea. Kurtz?
Yea.
Lamont?
Yea.
Schaffner?
Yes.
Yes.
Yea, yes.
It does carry unanimously with one person who didn't want to follow instructions, but okay.
Are you surprised which one it was?
But he'll come back next week and ask forgiveness, I'm sure.
And yea, and yea, yea, he was.
Don't start.
That's right.
I said, yea, he said, say yea, I said, yea.
Don't start, he'll challenge the chair.
Just a little Ice Cube reference for those of y'all.
He'll challenge the chair, don't start.
Right, okay. All right, and just, just so everybody is aware, staff is trying to work on that detailed budget. My understanding is we're gonna get a spreadsheet within a day or so that'll have data in it that's searchable, but not the big, thick budget book at that point. And when will the budget book come out?
I'm hoping to have the complete budget book for you on the next agenda.
Okay, all right. All right, so just, that's a piece of information. Number seventeen, discussion of items for future agenda to include agenda items for our consideration on the August twenty-second council agenda and items on the council future agenda list. Council, call your attention to pages two fifty-five and two fifty-six first. That's the agenda for our next session. I don't see any changes or notice anything. Does anybody have any comments about this one?
Yeah, I have a question on item four. Have we cleared that with T C Q? Because I know that we've, we've ran into this in previous years where we schedule something and have to reschedule it because we don't have T C Q approval.
All right, good question.
That, I don't have the answer to that, that's for the household.
We maybe don't have an answer, so it's something for follow-up. Okay.
Household agreement that we have.
All right. Any other changes to the agenda for twenty seconds?
Yes, sir, tonight's consent item four was pulled, so it'll be going on that one next meeting.
Yes, thank you, Eric. All right, and then page two fifty-seven and two fifty-eight. I'm gonna call your attention on item one. Somewhere, there's a note. Oh, notice there's an asterisk underneath the initial dates, it says, discussion after May 2018 election. This has just been rolling back and forth, and everybody seems to be of consistent consensus that there's no use even dealing with this issue till after the election. So I think Holly, at a minimum, you could remove all of those dates after that asterisk. And do you just want to leave it on future agenda or totally remove it from future agenda?
I would leave it on, so it's...
All right, so we'll leave it, just get rid of the dates and don't worry about the follow-through. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Any day kind of thing, we'll just wait till May or June next year.
They just leave the May twenty-second or whatever.
And so one other thing I just want to throw out as a possible placeholder. Most of you are probably aware that legislation did pass in the current legislative session of Texas House and Senate to allow for small cell aspects. We have actually been approached by AT&T, who sent us a letter saying, we'd be happy to work with you on the development of an ordinance. I sent that on to Tom. And then the second thing is, at least Schaffner and I had had some discussions about, do we want to look at potentially a pilot location for that? And Philip pointed out to me that there is actually a small cell site at, in South Lake Town Center, next to...
No, it's, it's on South Lake Boulevard in front of Starbucks.
Oh, okay.
They have one on a...
South Lake?
By Nolan Drive, that, the drive-through location?
Right on South Lake Boulevard.
Yeah, but which Starbucks, there's only one every two, every mile.
It's on a car.
The one that's near Nolan and Seventy-O Nine?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right in front, directly in front.
The one with the drive-through?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
There's no doubt in my mind that that kind of technology is going to be the wave of the future this coming. You're gonna not erect tall towers anymore. And so being proactive in it, at least from my perspective, doing something proactive, maybe in the Trophy Wood area where Town Hall is and the restaurants and entertainment, maybe makes sense. Maybe something around our parks makes sense. And if we work with the vendors, maybe that'll, we'll have more control over what...
They can start on, they can start on Edgemere.
Yeah, we have some notorious, low spots, low cover spots in town.
My house too, because I have so many trees.
By the country club.
I get no signal.
I, I have an item I'd like to add.
So is that okay that we place that on future agenda?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, all right.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to add, and hopefully, we can take care of this pretty quickly, is, I, I'd like to add what the, what the lady brought up earlier about pool barriers and reviewing definition of allowable pool barriers. Make sure that we're technologically inclusive there.
I'll look at that, it may be an interpretation issue, too.
Possibly. That'd be, that'd be cool.
I just gotta look at that.
Yeah.
I, I was even curious why we wouldn't have suggested to them that they could get a variance. Is there a way to get a variance on that? I, I think the better way would maybe appeal the building officials' interpretation, that it is allowed, a variance.
You gotta go through, you have to go through a whole nother round of meetings to get that done? I'm actually shocked that it's not more prevalent already, so.
Yeah. Okay.
Two minutes seemed a little long to me, though.
All right, pool barriers, okay, very good, anybody else?
Are you wanting this as soon as August twenty-second?
Well, whatever.
On future, on future agenda.
Yeah.
It'll be up to staff as to how fast they can move on it, I think, is at this point. I don't know that it affects the lady that talked to us tonight.
It sounds like it does.
Maybe follow up on that, Tom, and see where we are, and maybe you can move that forward if it needs to affect that lady.
So, when you say that you want a placeholder, what's item five?
We've already added your, your item that you sent to add per an email on Friday you wanted to add.
Oh, you, oh, okay, so there, oh, wow. That's, that's a five on that scale that we had, that we'll be talking about next.
Okay. All right, so anything else on item seventeen? All right, hearing none, in just a moment, I'm gonna read this and we're gonna go into executive session. It is nine thirty-three. And we're going to go into executive session pursuant to the following designated sections of the Texas Government Code, candidated Chapter five five one, Texas Open Meeting Act. The council convened into executive session to discuss the following. Section five five one point oh seven four, personnel matters under subsection one to discuss or deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, review of the town manager. This item is on the agenda because the employment contract called for this timeframe to have a midterm evaluation. And item B, Section five five one oh seven two, deliberation regarding real property to discuss or deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with a third person. And Section five five one point oh eight seven, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations under subsection two, to discuss or deliberate the offer of financial or other incentives to a business prospect that the town seeks to have locate within the territory of the town north of Highway one fourteen, east of Trophy Club Drive. Councilmember Kurtz and Schaffner, we are in closed session. Counsel, we're gonna take item B first, just to let you know that, that'll let some of the staff leave before we get into the evaluation. Counsel, if you will come to order, it is eleven ten, and we have reconvened into regular session after being in executive session. Item nineteen, consider to take appropriate action regarding the executive session. We have no action. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Do you have a second?
So moved.
So I had a motion by Rowe and a second by Kurtz, all in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous, we are adjourned at eleven eleven.